Now, video and audio.
So why don't we ask the...
Steve and Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Scott, can you hear us?
Yeah, but he could hear us. There you go.
Yeah, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're ready to rock and roll. It's... It's 7:01, and I'm going to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 7th to order. And I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's so funny sitting here and watching all the town employees run for the hills. It's seven o'clock, so they're off duty now. How about a roll call? Let's try that.
June Daly.
Here.
Andrea Lou Millard.
Excuse.
Diane Josie.
Here.
Tim Ziegmont.
Here.
Ann Rogan.
Here.
Scott Hamel.
Present.
And Chairman Beal.
Here.
Alternate Susan Bacon.
Here.
The alternate Steve Biella.
Here.
All right, so we have Andrea Millard excused, so I'll ask John Dyken because he's here to be seated.
And do.
For Ms. Miller, thank you. And Steve, stand by. All righty, so we have the roll call done, the Pledge of Allegiance, so Item 4 is the receipt of new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. The first item is... Yes?
So, well, if you want to read the item, that's...
Not really.
It has been withdrawn.
Oh.
In anticipation of additional information that both the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission will need to review the plans. And so Inland Wetlands took it up at their meeting on Tuesday night and suggested, let's draw both application, you know, they drew the application from Wetlands to get them more information, and at Wetlands' suggestion drew yours as well.
Okay, so Item 4 is withdrawn, so we don't have to consider anymore. Okay, moving on to the... Let's go on to the approval of minutes. Boy, whoever does these minutes, they're pretty thorough, about four pages.
Does a good job.
They do. No, they do a good job.
That is Ashley, our administrator.
Okay, tell her I said nicely done. July 10th, does everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Have you had a chance to consider any corrections that are needed, or the spellings, whatever? Or if hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I noted no changes needed, and we'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Josie to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ziegmont. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, terrific, so moved. July 24th, have we had a chance to go ahead and review those? Are there any corrections that we need, or...
I did not know any corrections needed. I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Josie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ziegmont. Further discussion? Then all those in favor, aye.
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 All those in favor, aye. Okay.
Wasn't here for that one.
Let me see, we had Daly, Ziegmont, Josie, myself, Millard, Hamel, Rogan, and Biella. So let's go again. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. Those opposed? So moved. All right. Boy, I thought I lost you guys there. Stay with me. I know, I'm going too fast. Executive session and public comment and possible action on proposed stipulation for judgment. And this is Item 6 that we're at. So the proposed stipulation for judgment is posted on the town's website at the Planning and Zoning Commission's page, which can be accessed through the government tab on the website homepage. A copy is also available, or is available through the Planning and Zoning Department at the Town Hall and the Commission meeting. The first is a discuss the... Discuss the status of the pending litigation and proposed stipulation for judgment in 1906 Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission, the town of Berlin. And let me see, possible action by the commission related to same. Members of the public can participate and offer comment on the stipulation of judgment for the commission, or to the commission. Also, the second item is to consider whether to convene to executive session to discuss the status of the pending litigation and proposed stipulation for judgment in the 1906 Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission, town of Berlin. And so those are the two that we have. So we're not in executive session, but is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on the plans or... That have been distributed through the town planner, is up on the website? Anyone from the public? Hearing none. Is there any comments, I guess, from the commission? Any additional comments?
I think it's been beaten up. We've been after this for a long... What, sorry?
Yeah, please, Tim.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thought it was on. It's been beaten up for a long time. I think we scrutinized this enough.
And so... Do we go ahead? Maureen, do you want us to make a decision on the stipulation, or...
It would really feel more comfortable if we hold for a couple of minutes, waiting for Corporation Counsel, who should be on her way up. She was at the stop sign just to go.
Oh, do you have one of those find me?
Make a motion to...
We do have the stipulation for judgment, a draft of it, that was distributed to all of you, and it was sent out prior to the meeting. Got an email that said it was ready for your review. And so I guess I'll just give a little bit of a introduction to it. It's basically the same format as you've seen before for the last... The other 830G applications you got with stipulations, with the, you know, the first paragraph basically centering about the history, the why you're here, why you have the stipulation before you. And then some of the facts that happened during the hearing before the application was denied, the intent to resolve the matter through a stipulation as opposed to going through the court system. And then we get into the terms and conditions. So, you know, it's so that the property can be developed for multifamily housing. And the... Reminder that this is the draft stipulation, so if there's corrections or details that come out in the plan set gets tweaked for date or something, that will be done. But those have all been checked through the plans that you've gotten and that were distributed. You may have noted that the plans you saw that were posted this past week and that were distributed, the cover page said June of 2025 of the applicant, and he'll confirm this for the record, but indicated that we didn't find what the revisions were in the plan set and why. It had to do with the sewers and the pump, the pumping and sewer plan pages and, you know, related changes. No substantial changes in staff's opinion to those plans. So they were the same as those that you'd had previously in print form, and that's the print form, and that's why we didn't make another set for tonight, because that's the print form you have that says May of 2025. Then we get down to, you know, what's on the settlement plan, including the fact that it allows for 32 units to be developed with the mix of two-unit and four-unit buildings, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. And with a 20% affordable component, which will be seven of those units, four of which will be one-bedroom, two-two-bedroom, and one-three-bedroom. The affordability of those units are, again, 20% of the total units at 80% affordable for 50 years. I think overall, those are the key elements of... There'll be...
Only 50 years?
Fifty years, that's what was discussed during executive sessions. Then it will be with a deed restriction, as well as the requirement to follow to... File Housing Affordability Plan, and that's... Gets filed in the land records along with the deed restriction. And it has those components in it that lay out exactly what's affordable and how it works, and whose administrators during it. And in this case, the draft affordability plan indicates that Mr. Snow as will be the administrator, and has shown, as he agreed to in his... Another case is his ability to do so. And staff and counsel have reviewed his credentials to do so. You've reviewed the architecturals. Again, there may be... There's anything with regard to the plans, the architecturals, the landscaping, the lighting, or other details that anyone has any questions about or has concerns about? I think that's... This would be appropriate time to work that all out. They will have, again, as we've been asked to make sure that our multifamilies have cluster mailboxes. And he's shown that throughout his plans, as well as an area for a bus stop if... Which it's, he has that in his plan, and it is on his property. So it's subject to DOT, but it will be whether it's a child bus stop or just a shelter for people using main route bus stop. City buses, otherwise known as. Yes, I think that's... You scrutinize the parking as well, the ability to get around the units and landscaping to that. And then again, the terms that defer to attorney speak for the terms of the stipulation with regard to cost attorney fees, terms of stipulation filing in court, all that stuff. That's not my wheelhouse.
That's on the real line, right?
I don't want to misspeak on any of those details. I defer back.
We don't have... We don't have copies of the stipulation here in our packages, so...
No, well, that's okay.
Oh, but we do have it.
We did see, I read it online, but it'd be helpful to have a hard copy.
I did not instruct her to print those I should have. I'm sorry for that. And I can run down and make them. You have a hard copy, everybody? I don't mind taking.
I think it was the last thing in the drop box.
Yeah, it just came...
So, I mean, I can tell that's what portions are different than what you reviewed in 1676. That's, you know, so you narrow it. Really was pointing out, obviously, the... I mean, if you're here, you can...
Jennifer, you can give us the differences so that we have...
Absolutely.
Those are basically going to be the highlights of the stipulation that we already...
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we can go with that.
We're okay without copies. We can look at it on the screen.
We can, or she can.
Got a question on one section.
All right, it's okay.
You bring it up? Yeah, you brought it up.
She's getting copies.
Yeah.
She's going to get copies.
Well, I assume Jennifer wants to...
Give her overview.
Her thing.
Did you want me to kind of narrow in on those portions that are different from what you had previously?
Okay, please do.
So, you know, we've sort of developed a form, if you will, as far as stipulations are concerned, because there's certain provisions you always want to have. Some of those come at the end of the stipulation with regard to enforcement typically, and just the procedural matters that we need to take care of to make sure we're complying with the law to, right? So in terms of what's different from the 1676 stipulation to the 1906 stipulation, obviously, the facts are in the first paragraph are different. You'll remember that you also had a text amendment application for this, the same text amendment application, but of course filed against the 1906, 1934, and then the unnumbered parcel, because we've got three parcels here. And that the original ask, the original application under 830G was for 52 units. And the settlement is 32, as Maureen pointed out to you. So that first paragraph is different. The second paragraph contains language that is identical to what was in 1676 with regard to your compliance at that time with 830G and the 10% threshold. You were at 8.8 because it was the 2022 list that applied to those applications. So obviously, boilerplate coming up next, that it's the intent of the parties to resolve the matter without time, expense, and risk of further litigation, or without any admission of liability. We always say that when we're settling something, right? And then we are stipulating to a judgment. This isn't a settlement agreement. It's going to enter as a judgment of the court. That's an important point. And then as far as the more specific terms, we see those in Paragraph 5, subsection A, the general terms and conditions. All that's changed there is the identification of the plan set itself. So our Exhibit A identification has the Sprucebrook Apartments Plan Set identification. And then the language that you see in Paragraph 2 and Paragraph 3 is language that we had previously developed. Of course, you know, we want to put in anything. We certainly have, you know, no doubt that he's going to do this, but the expectation of compliance with all requirements of the law contained in Paragraph 2. And just the acknowledgement that if there is some change in the future, that additional required approvals will be sought. You know, just the recognition of the fact that should something change, that they would have to come back. So, and then Subparagraph 3 in subsection A is that it's expressly agreed and understood that no provision of the stipulation is to be interpreted as requiring the issuance of any permit or approval by any official employee department, board, commission, agency, or authority of the town, but for the approval of your commission of a site plan that is submitted in full compliance with the settlement plan that we're going to go into in the next subsection, subsection B. So the settlement plan... And I do see a numbered typo there. I'll fix that. There's always one, you know, you think you catch them all. But the settlement plan itself in 5B, the general terms and conditions is really, I think, the heart of this and the most important part. We've got 12 two-bed... Two-bedroom, two-unit residential buildings, and then we have two four-unit residential buildings, 32 units total. There's 13 one-bedroom, there's 16 two-bedroom and three-three-bedroom. And then the parties are, of course, specifically agreeing that no additional housing units will be constructed. So that's something that we had in the other one as well, and we typically include. Did something a little different with regard to floor area here. Remember, on the last one, we had to come back, there was an issue between floor area and living space. Floor area, the term floor area is in fact used on this plan set in SP1. And we're saying here that the maximum total floor area for each housing unit and the total footprint of each building shall not exceed the square footage. That's identified in the site layout plan, which again is SP1. And, you know, so rather than going, because there are varying sizes in terms of the particular types of units, the bedroom counts, and that's in the table, I don't... Do you have the actual plan set as well, or... On page 3? So, yeah, so rather than articulate, you know, all the various measurements, we're just making reference to that in a general way, that the expectation is that there is going to be compliance with those numbers that we see on that sheet. Again, SP1, the site layout plan. The distribution of the bedroom count at... That's okay. Sorry. Sorry. And just. Out there for a second as well. So the distribution of the bedroom count among the housing units shall be as provided in sheet number, sheet, again, number SP one. No housing unit shall exceed the bedroom or bathroom count. Again, this, this general provision of the expectation is that, you know, we're not going to see um when certificate of occupancy gets issued, any additional bedrooms or bathrooms um depicted in or included in, not depicted, included in um any of the units, so that's there. Um, there are garages and walkouts, um, there are not garages for all the units as reflected in the plan, so um, they're going to be provided as indicated. And then two of the housing units, and they're in the corner, um, specifically housing unit number five and number seven, they're going to be our type A accessibility units. And that's noted. And then uh height, uh, did you talk, I, I kind of came in on that, um, did you talk about that? Okay. So, um, I. I guess, uh. Did you, I know that you looked at it as well. So the height that's indicated in the table is, is twenty five seven on SP one. And we just wanted to call out the fact that it, when you look at the architecturals, which I know were also sent to you. Um, not all the buildings are of the same height. And uh the question was whether or not uh we should, in fact, I think that needs to be changed to the maximum that we're seeing in, in the architecturals. So we are going to make that change, but just wanted to point that out to you that that was noticed.
What's the change? Was it maximum fifty five?
It's actually a little bit, I think the, the biggest one was thirty nine, you know, if memory serves, so, um. And I think, Pat, that you did send a summary of that. Let me just call that up.
Says required thirty five. Proposed twenty seven five. This is in the plan that we received. The SP one. Yeah, the SP one plan, the page.
Now, it should be in the other grouping of the architect. Well, towards the end, I think there's that.
I was, okay. So is it on the second plan? Hang on just a second. Yes, here's the SP one.
That's where the, so the SP one is where the zoning chart. And, yeah, those. On that screen now.
Okay. Okay, hold on. But we're talking about the building height?
We're talking about the building height, so um buildings number one and two, so as you enter. Going in, buildings number one and two, which are the first buildings that you had on the right, um, are going to be twenty seven feet, one inch in the front, and then in the rear, they're thirty seven two. Then uh you get to three and four. Um, those are going to be seventeen seven in the front and then twenty seven five in the rear.
Okay, I don't think you're going to find them in the. Not finding them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I keep finding the old table.
We took um out the package that was labeled the previous meeting, and I think that's.
Okay, so, so.
So I think they were, they were emailed to them.
So I'm looking, all right, so I'm looking at SP one, and you're talking about units one and two?
So units one and two, they're twenty seven one in the front.
Twenty seven.
And then there's thirty seven two in the rear.
That's in the front, rear, and they're thirty seven two.
And then buildings three and four, which you come upon next, are um seventeen seven in the front and then twenty seven five in the rear. Buildings five through nine are twenty seven one in the front. And thirty six one in the rear. Building ten is also twenty seven one in the front. And thirty six eleven in the rear. And building eleven is also twenty seven one in the front, and it's thirty four six in the rear. Um, and then twelve and thirteen are thirty nine six in the front and thirty nine six in the rear. And building fourteen is the largest, it's thirty nine eleven in the front, and it's thirty nine eleven in the rear. So fourteen will be obviously to the left as you pull in.
Can you tell me the bedroom uh distribution again? Yeah.
Oh, sure, so you can see that actually, um, Maureen, if you bring up.
There, bedroom.
SP one again, they're all two units and then um, and then there's four in the buildings. Um.
Three of them.
The two quad buildings in the.
I'm only asking, is, is there three bedroom units in here?
So, um.
Four of them, I think.
Three or, I'm sorry, the three. Yeah, three.
There's, there's three three bedrooms.
Three three bedroom.
Yeah.
So is that one?
Sixteen two bedrooms, and then there's uh thirteen one bedroom.
So the three bedroom ones are units thirteen and fourteen? Then? And that accounts for the height?
Yeah, Patty.
Yeah, if you can, that'd be great.
That I had marked up, but I don't have it in front of me.
It's two different issues, if the question is where the three bedrooms, the three bedrooms are building one first come in, is the units without garages? You could look at.
Okay, so units. Without garages.
So if you, if you look, you come from, when you come into the entrance, building one and building two are your three bedrooms. Which are units one, two, three, four. And then the other three bedroom is unit number twenty one, which is the last building on the, all the way on the right hand side. And you, you do see that there's a garage on the side of that, that is our maintenance garage, not a garage, as, as you see, there's no driveway in front of it.
So there's that, there's the marking.
Okay.
In the green, you'll see where it says maintenance garage.
And just on, on the heights, I gave the height uh on that table from the front to the very peak.
Yeah.
You calculate a regular build, when I say regular, a whole building height, it's not to the regular peak, so when you're looking at that number, saying, oh my God, that's forty feet, but if you calculated how they would have regular, I want to say regular, i- in a normal building application, it would still meet the thirty five or thirty seven calculation. But I just wanted to make this simple, so if someone looked at a diagram and said, hey, measure from the peak to there, we know what we have, we didn't, we're doing any formulas, I tried to keep it as simple as possible.
So visually speaking, however, if you're at the road and looking at the buildings, you won't be able to tell that one is thirty nine feet in height and one is twenty seven. I mean, are you going to have these, these staggered roof lines?
No, because if you look where the uh larger ones are, they're, if you come a- back around, they're on, you pull in on the right, there, the building's on the left. All those are the, are the higher buildings.
Okay, all right.
Grading drops off as you come around that, yeah, correct.
Yeah. And just on the grading itself. Because originally, when we looked at this plan, we were looking at like eighteen foot wall or something, and I've noticed that the grades have been diminished. I'm a concerned that, you know, if it, to adjacent properties, that we're not causing any distress or or problems with drainage or whatever, so uh the sloping then is going to be gradual in, in the back to the next level.
Gradual for the plane.
All right, okay. I just want to make sure that.
Enough that we don't need any walls or retaining walls to meet into our neighborhood.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not causing any distress to any of the neighbors, you don't want to be hearing about that. No, no. Okay, so, hooray, architecturals.
I know on the, on the other part, we had the fifty year for the affordable.
Yeah.
My goal is I'll be a hundred and ten, and I hope I could see that expiration, and at least remember that I was here to get the first fifty.
You never know, with, with AI happening, they probably would have transplanted your brain into some robot, you might be here for hundreds.
Thanks.
They're good, all right, I just want to.
The third three bedroom unit. You have one, twenty one, and what's the other one?
Building one, building two.
Oh, building two.
I like this one of all the, all of them, I like this one, a nice little simple ranch, you know, just like a little. Yeah, I know.
We, I guess we don't have the, the newest, newest plan, and we only got the May and. We don't have the newest plan at all.
May plan is the same except for the, the sewer. So as the June plan, the June plan was what was distributed electronically, but we saved a couple of trees because that was only minimal.
I had a concern of building one, two that the back had the ladder uh thing for the firemen. And I, it's only nine feet, we wanted to move it to at least eleven or ten or eleven. So that's not done, so I'm just want to make sure that's done. All you got to do is cock it a little bit, but.
What, what are you asking, that, that the height shrink?
No, the, no, the, the lot line is, is nine feet off the back of the building of one and two.
What is it now?
It is nine foot right now.
Oh, okay.
It is nine foot, it should be, the ladder that building on the backside, it should be at least eleven feet. So that building's got to be moved forward two feet.
I think after our last meeting, you were going to discuss that with the fire marshal, I don't know if that happened or didn't happen. I personally have no problem pushing it two feet closer to the road, um, but I would leave that to.
I mean, that, that road can move out two feet and right there in front of those buildings.
Well, I wouldn't do that either, I would just push the building two foot closer, which would.
Well, I don't know what the distance to the front is, but it's not.
I have the room in the sidewalk area, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to.
I, I believe the fire marshal did not take exception to that, however, um, in my opinion, if the commission feels that that's a change that, you know, and, and the applicant doesn't think that that's a, um, a change that will alter his plans um in any other substantial way, if the commission's fine with that little indication in the alignment of the units, um. I would think for health and safety, why not, but it's a commission decision.
That was one of the items that was brought to uh when it was appealed, it was one of the items in fire safety. And that's one of the items that were there in fire safety, is that building had to be moved away before you can ladder to the back of the building.
The building was taller, the building, the building was.
Remember.
You can always get the lights up here, but you could do something a little bit different.
But, yeah, uh. We did talk about it. Pat's indicating he's okay with it, um, so. He'll make that change in the final submission, um, that staff or review. Um, so it's not, it's not, that just to touch on the stipulation.
It's afraid.
No, no, just.
Are having discussed.
Makes a difference, and maybe like.
Just to mention on the map, that's it.
The two eleven keys, Tom?
Yes, the rear, rear, nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven, two feet.
Specifically behind. In the corner.
And, and any minor changes that might alter to, et cetera. Um, that's what the commission was.
Yeah. Can we, can we talk about the architecturals? Can we?
I see her drawing plant boxes out of dismembering.
No, 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 no plant boxes.
Okay.
No, I just have some, I just have some ideas. No, you're not playing nicely.
Well, I think he has the final one up on the uh screen. Is this the final one that you handed out, or is this just?
Yes, that would be, that's one, the, uh, I forget what building it is, twelve or thirteen, I believe.
Now, is this the front of the building or the back of the?
The front of the building.
This is the front of the building. Okay. Um. Okay, the garage doors are all solid, will there be any windows or so that lighting can get in to?
I did not put any windows in, no.
But you can get thicker glass, the glass that lets the light in, but people can't see in. There is like a, it's a new safety glass.
No, I.
The what?
Not sure about that.
That's loving that idea.
You know.
What?
Especially on garage doors, yes, there's windows like that, I don't know if there's any in garage doors, garage doors typically people can't see in, this is more just of a design. Again, I'll go back to sixteen seventy six, we put no garage there, we had the lights inside, it's not a, not a problem.
And you're talking about people living at close proximity, you don't want people having the opportunity to look into your private business.
It's basically, and sometimes if people set up things that they do at night.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just, I, I guess just looking at the architecturals, I'm looking for a little bit more. I don't know if it's a wider frame around the window, or you see how you have the um, you have the little air vents up above. Um, perhaps there's some way of putting almost like a decorative keystone above each of the top windows, or even all the windows, just a little, when you do the siding, you just leave that little block that like architectural keystone in there.
Yeah, it's a keystone.
Yeah.
You want to add four keystones to that building?
Yeah, I was thinking, I, originally, I was thinking just the top window, but I'm thinking maybe all the windows, I mean, because even those.
When you said that, that'd be four, if you want all of them to be eight.
Yeah.
So four?
So I'm thinking all eight.
Eight?
Yeah, and then perhaps you could have a more generous frame around the window. So i- instead of it just being the window in the in the, fitted into the, the frame itself, but on the outside, when you're doing the siding, you run just a thicker.
A four inch, yeah.
Yeah, a thicker frame, and it just, it gives it a little bit heftier look, and it's a little bit cleaner and architecturally, it's a little bit more interesting than just a regular window, because now I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, what is it, what is it missing visually? Uh, for me anyway. And you do want it to be a nice project, even though it might be, this might be uh up, this might, this is probably in the back of your development, but still, just looking to see what the neighbors are going to be looking at. And this is supposed to be the front of the building, so we wanted to make it as attractive as we can. I mean, you've done a good job, and you are going to do the flower boxes, so hooray for that. So, but, but architecturally, I'm just looking for it to do something else, to pop just a little bit more.
It was a condition, you want to do a four inch frame on all the front windows. I hear that you should do it on the project if we're going to do that.
You should do it on the project.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, just, this is an architectural, I'm addressing, but. June, you.
This question, and not wanting, I'm just curious, is, is more modern windows narrower nowadays? Like if they're metal framework, aren't they more narrow? More of a current style versus a wider frame?
Well, they are, but what, what I'm saying is that when they put the, the way, when they put the window in, they normally frame it. Okay, they frame around it, so you cover up where the, the siding is meeting the window, you dress it out. And, yeah, it's a trim, so alls I'm saying is make it just a little bit wider. And yeah, it's a trim. So alls I'm saying is make it just a little bit wider to make it almost like it's a picture frame on the window. Otherwise, you're going to have a very thin. You still got to get that trim on there, but I'm just asking for something just a little bit more generous to make it pop a little bit more. If you go around and look at different buildings. And different designs, you'll see it in there.
The only comment I'll make is I think this, this, I think it is a simplistic, just simplicity to the design. I mean, you don't want to make the windows pop and all of a sudden now the. Garage door and the front doors don't look like they're popping either. Like you're kind of screwing up with.
That's the beauty of the window box.
No, I know what you're saying. I'm just, I, 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 I like it the way it is, but I understand.
I, I'm just, I'm just going for the gusto here.
Absolutely.
All right.
We all are.
Yeah, I know.
One way or the other.
One aspect or another. All right, anyone else or? Anyone?
I struggle.
I struggle a little with the Architectials too, but it's hard when you're looking at everything on a small sheet of paper. The way it's presented, it almost seems. Like it lacks texture or depth. Because of it being on paper, but.
It goes back and forth. Again, that's the metal roof over the top. So we, this is, we tried to do what you're saying because we weren't just, didn't go with just. Horizontal siding, went with some vertical siding. Uh, so those are, and some cedar shake type of siding in the middle there, if you see. That was the intent is to make it front and back. And you're right, you're not seeing that because it's one dimensional, not. Three dimensional plan.
The, the first thing that I think of is. In like the farthest right. And then the third. Units above the garage door. Maybe, and I don't know the right term, like a hip roof or like an.
You can't because those, if you see those, that already sticks out. That's further out.
It does, okay.
So.
Yeah, so it's hard to see that.
Right, right. That's right. That's, you see the, that metal roof go backwards and then it sticks out over the other garage. The, the two garages you just mentioned are the furthest points out of that building.
So on those two sections. Higher up between the two windows, there's a horizontal line. What is that?
Just to separate the siding. We call it a freeze board. So you go up to the side. So let's say the siding is, in this case, maybe it's gray. You put a white board there so it does break it up and give it some.
Yeah, but you don't see the, what he's calling a freeze board. Yeah, yeah.
You don't see it in that drawing, but in this drawing, you see the white. And garage and everything else.
I just asked, I was asking about the. That horizontal line because it's hard to tell. In the drawing if it.
Oh, I see.
If there's any depth to it.
That whole section is out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other section is back.
Yep.
Come out again, back again. So that, if you look, when you look at that in the field, it's not going to look flat like that.
It'll, it'll have shadowing because it comes forward and back and as the sun rotates through the day, you're going to have different shadowing coming across and seeing that depth better, I think.
Keep it simple. We could do this all day, I think, but.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do the wider trim around the front.
Yeah.
We did it anyway last time on the, uh, on most of our projects. No problem if you want to make that part of our design. The front windows will be to go the. Four inch window casing around.
Yeah, that's fine.
May.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring a camera that I took the pictures of, um, his other nineteen oh six project on. I did, I'd wanted to share those because I think you can see the difference in the textures. And one of the things in particular. I, and I, it appears as though you have it on this too, in the peaks, that board you were talking of that, that we pointed out when we were out in the field looking at that. Project. In each peak, you have the soffit and then there's a board along the wall that kind of makes the peak pop. Um, you might have the right terms to use for those, but it's, yeah, and it, it. So you're looking at your flat soffit on the peak, then there's a trim board and.
So you're talking about this.
Things like that and the change of materials. I do think enhanced the project. Fifteen seventy-six.
Well, then we want the same thing.
Well, yeah. You all want the same thing. We just want it to, to be pretty.
Looking nice. That whole project is looking nice.
And the, and the metal roof that's down at first story level, you know, just above. Also another feature.
Brings it up.
Gives attention to the face of each of the buildings.
Okay.
And was, is effective on that one, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes seeing the actual building is just, it changes everything, you know, so I mean. Yeah.
The other project.
The other project, uh, when we looked at the.
They have any feedback?
Wasn't that much, but we look at the buildings built. And they're gorgeous now. Nice and clean. Very nice project, the other project. I'm sure he's going to do the same thing here.
He will.
All comes out in the, in the payroll at the end, rentals.
So, so as far as the colors of the buildings of the units, is that? The handouts here, is that more representative to closer to what the colors are? Because up there, I'm seeing like a minty green.
The, what you have in the color picture, that's not a color drawing is closer, but I ha, I haven't finalized those colors yet.
Okay, good. Well, yeah, all right.
And they'll be similar to different tones, different shades, different colors on each. Again, very similar to the project down the street.
Okay. You know, I'm going to ask Steve Biella or Scott Hamel online. I don't, I know that this has been difficult for you to see some of the, the renderings that we have, but. I think we lost Steve Biella. All right. Um, do you have, do you guys have any questions or, or concerns at this point that you want to sort of chime in? Give some feedback?
No, I think, um, I think, Madam Chairman, you touched base on most of it. Um, I, and from my point of view, I just think it's very plain looking. You know, I don't want to be, I don't want to be. Pat, but, but it's very, for me, it's very sim, very simple looking.
Okay. All right. Do you have Mr. Hamel any suggestions?
No, I mean. I'm not a developer, but I mean, looking at the face of that building, you kind of touched on it, but. It just seems like there's too much face on that building. I mean, I know you can't paint the windows bigger and so on and so forth, but. I mean, maybe if you put shutter, I mean, just to close it, I mean, just to make it a little homely, to make it look more of a. Homier looking building instead of just a big, looks like an apartment building.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was. I was kind of hoping that with a wider trim, that you wouldn't have to go with a shutter or anything. You could avoid that.
Correct. I have agreed to the wider trim and, and I think we identified that a drawing is different than what is in the field.
Yeah.
The, the in and out, the depth and the different material and the texture will not make it look just like a. Straight face wall, but on the draw, I understand.
I think what Mr. Hamel was trying to say is that he wanted him to look more like a home as opposed to, you know, I'm going to the apartment. I, I think. That's what he was reaching for, but I am speaking for him.
And, and that's what we try to do as well.
But I think also, Pat, once you put that four inch trim up, I think you'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Steve Biella, do you have any feedback? We're, we're anxious to hear what you have to say. Maybe he doesn't have any.
Oh, I'm, I'm good. It looks like. Project.
All right, okay. And commission, any other, anything else on the Architectials?
No, I think the four inch trim, that makes sense. I'm, I'm hesitant to. I have no criticisms at all of this design. Frankly, part of the reason why I'm trying to restrain from saying anything else other than. I, I will echo your comments about the trim is that it's really hard to judge something one dimensional. I mean, it's going to look fantastic, I think. And, you know, you can, you know, obviously. Oh, one question I had for you, Pat, is the fact that the, I guess we'll call this the second and the fourth unit, that they come out more on the front of the building. Does that mean there's more space?
No, because the back to.
The back is, it's, it's, okay, so it shifts the, just, okay. No, it looks fantastic. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else on this, on the Architectials?
I just have a question on the stipulation.
Okay.
Architectials.
Oh, all right. All right, let's get the stipulation out.
I don't think you need the stipulation out even for this question.
Okay, all right, well.
I think I.
All right, that's fine.
That's what's facing the turnpike. So I think that might be what might have some concerns about.
Okay.
I can't actually find that elevation in my.
Oh, okay.
He just pulled up a plan that I don't have the print of, so I'm thinking, you know, the package I have, I might have.
That's not a problem.
So.
All right.
Do we have that elevation? The rear of. She'll have it online.
All right.
The rear of any of the units that are labeled from twenty-three to thirty-two. Pages that say. Your, a rear or, I think, four units.
This lady came out and said, who are these dudes? Sorry. It's this guy that I get a kick out of.
Rear of, no, the rear of.
Choke him out of the angel dinner.
Oh, on the plane. You, you, did we get that?
Yeah, because I sent you the entire, um, like, it was like A, A one to A eight or something like that. You open the email?
So that's the front of it, correct? That's the front. It will face inside.
Mr. Snow, one quick question. Um. On the, on the back of the units that face the highway, I see you got the one. Red maple there and then it looks like that's common green space. Could you add a few more trees in the back there just to break up the back of the buildings?
For the, on the landscaping plan?
Yeah. Right, right there. It looks like it's just common green space. Yeah, it's like a few more trees in there just to break up the buildings.
Yeah, in all, in all likelihood, I'm probably going to work with staff on adjusting that landscaping plan as well, but I could agree to adding some more buffer to the.
Staff on landscaping?
And the lighting we have, I don't, I think. Inside, you mean, or you're the? Yeah.
Light and stuff you're going to work with?
We have that anyway, but yes, that's fine.
This is on the garage or whatever. Okay. You're going to work with staff on that.
I'll work with that landscaping and lighting. Thank you.
Because I'll be looking forward to the big window boxes.
The window boxes, pounds of light.
No.
They're not window. Yeah, it's the, the best one to go to is twelve and thirteen.
Too much. I forwarded it to you and Ashley.
I wanted to know what was happening in the units.
I think it was a lay in the metal there.
Stamps was around.
LP one.
LP one.
And the big one, uh, the big one.
Is this the big one? I thought there was some kind of a quick meeting. All right.
Okay, wait, it's looking like it'd be quick.
Yeah. What's this, so?
Of the, the length.
Well, the, the goal will be to hide this view that we're getting. If, if, if your landscaping is, uh. What I want to do, I want to screen this, this view that you're about to see, at least if not immediately, but quickly. Similar to when we were here before about the plants, the trees that were, were too big, I would probably propose putting those in this location so that we would create a barrier. No berm, because, well, this is a reverse berm, if you remember. Along the Berlin Turpike, they have that big ditch. So that's, we're going to be at the top of that, so the trees would be from there. I don't say, the drainage area, I guess we can't call it a big ditch, but it's the state's drainage area.
And she has a stipulation content.
So this is the elevation that we're trying, this is to the Berlin Turpike. This is the elevation that eventually we will have trees growing up in front of. But yes, that is the, the elevation to. Block screen, so, you know, the rest of the project from the Berlin Turpike. That would be the backyard. Correct. Well, what do you mean? You could always, the ground is flat, you're saying. Correct, correct, agreed. Or we'll know. That's right. That's true. That maybe they want, maybe they want to watch the cars, though. I know. But, but anyway, we, we, our, our goal with the, our goal with the landscaping is to buffer this area. So that's, that's the. Gist of that statement. We don't show it, we don't show it on this one, but there will be. That was, that was one of the big features that we just finished a project on, so. Oh, this one has a, a door going straight out to, to an area. That's going to be steps and then grass on the outside of that.
Scott Hamel, you have your hand up? Okay.
Yeah, um, yes, Madam Chair. Pat, can you just do me a favor? I don't know if I, I didn't see it, but can you just go back to, or Maureen, can you go back to the other, the, I want to see where those dumpsters are?
There are no dumpsters.
So you're going to have a regular pickup?
It's regular trash, individual trash pickup, yes.
Okay, that's like, yeah, okay. All right, no, I just, I didn't want to not, you know, not know. That there wasn't going to be anything like that.
No, I think, I think there should be no dumpsters anywhere. They're just nuisance and they get dirty, but that's just my personal opinion.
I agree with you on that one. All right, thank you.
So Maureen, I think on this I've agreed to, we'll establish the buffer in the back through the landscaping plan.
I did that.
Okay. I, I don't know if there's anything else, though.
That is pretty stark. Landscaping does wonders.
Yeah, the window boxes. And the little windows that are above the.
Kitchen window.
That's a kitchen window.
Correct.
I don't know, it's screaming something, Pat, help me.
That's right, landscaping.
Is that just landscaping that's needed?
It's the back of a house. I mean, it's.
I know, but it's the front of the house. It's, you're going to be.
That's the challenge, so.
You know, that's, okay, so let me ask you, the top floor, is that the bedrooms?
Yes.
Have you thought about double hung windows side by side? In each bedroom?
Um, I, I would say no, because people like wall space in their bedrooms. So we don't, we're going to have a bed. On one side of that unit, which is, which is no windows on this side. Now you're going to have a bureau or something else, but.
I don't, I'm just trying to think of something to, to help you out with it.
To address the. To address the.
And, and the casement window over the kitchen sink.
Well, it's still double, we go with double hung, it's just smaller in size.
So it's not gonna be, I'm sorry, it's not gonna be a crankout, it's gonna be just so you lean over and you push the window open. Well, do you maybe wanna do two there?
You're gonna lose upper cabinets. Which people don't wanna do that.
Would you do something to create texture or depth with the siding? Similar to what we were talking about for the back buildings?
Yeah. Well, what, you want me to work with staff on that, just to create some kind of texture or, or trim or?
Or visual breakup?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm kinda thinking that, yeah.
Okay.
With the orange trim.
Yeah, it's gonna do everything.
Not a big fan of all the same thing, but you could break that wall up with a tall skinny arborvitae kind of a thing.
Some of it that we talked, that's.
Like what the Greek gods had, right?
There'll be a fence at all those doors as well, so it's gonna be a little break, I'm not saying that's, that's enough, but that's, you don't, you don't see that there, so you define your backyard. And then, to your point, for four-inch trim around the windows, it's fine. I'll break it up.
Okay. Again, here we are with, you know, the single. I don't know, I think with the, with the siding and the texture, you probably could break it up visually.
And like I said, and the fence is gonna break that whole, that'll, at least it'll give you a visual look of having four separate buildings, as opposed to one big building.
And the, the back of the building, well, no, the front of the building, which will be facing the
Street.
Street, inside the development, that's gonna be staggered.
The old drill, the old drawings like this. The old drawings like this is, and the first plans. What these are, are night and day. You know, so these drawings, these drawings that you'd be going by. You know, and these are, these are exceptional drawings, could see a little bit about what's the buildings gonna look like.
Right, those are just, yeah, those are just one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Realize anything in those drawings.
They're gonna be nice buildings, I don't know how, say, I, I, I'm confident in that, and we'll break it up. Look beautiful. Eventually, we'll get it so that no one sees it at all with the trees and the landscape.
Your lips are glaziers.
Get for another fifty.
Just a quick question.
Alright, anyone else? Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The screen, what's on screen? It appears almost that the doors have windows on the top pane.
Do.
Okay. Guess I don't see that in here, but I wish it's clarified that they have windows in the front door, just see. Yep, thanks.
Anyone else, or, or is there anything you wanted to comment on something, and then if you wanted?
Question on the stipulation.
Okay, question on the stipulation? Yeah.
And I, I think I'm gonna answer my own question.
Okay.
So.
Always fun.
Under five A-two general terms and conditions, the paragraph talking about the different permits, requirement for permits, it's, the first sentence mentions state permits, but in the body of the paragraph, there's not a mention of state permits that are required, so I'm assuming that by referencing the need to comply with state codes, it's just automatically included and doesn't need to be stated. Be all-inclusive, yeah, okay. I just didn't wanna miss it.
Okay. Good point.
The only one.
And Jennifer, is there anything that we wanted, after we skip out of the Architecturals for a while, or whatever? Is there anything that you wanted to point out to us? I mean, maybe you don't have anything, so.
That's the critical paragraph that's important, obviously. The affordability plan has been completed, that, that was updated. We decided to, we're, we're doing a, a statement from the plan administrator, just acknowledging, we started doing this a couple of plans ago. We had a administrator who was, that it was gonna be his first time administering the plan. So we decided that we're gonna incorporate that form as well, so that's separately executed and then attached and recorded with the housing authority plan, but all the links are updated in it as well, so in terms of, of, you know, getting to the information that's needed to do the calculation for eligibility, all of that's been updated.
Right.
As far as subsection C there on nature board, you know, we do have some discretionary elements for your planner. In regard to the Architectural, in regard to landscaping streets being material design standards, like. There's not going to be fencing as there was on the other, and I was, I'm glad that you answered that question about whether or not there would be that separation wall. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, to the extent that it does indicate that a plan you know, if it changed to the extent that it allows your planner to approve any provision, she's gonna point to you, I mean, she thinks that could be questioned, as she'll. And it is in this part.
Yeah, I think we spoke about the illumination plan at the last meeting. I mean, I didn't, I, I didn't have any problem with the parking illumination, I just, you know, my question was more like what were the, the poles gonna look like? What was the lighting fixtures gonna look like? And then if the, each unit would have, would each unit have individual, either lampposts or sconces, you know, on the garage or something, that's, that's really what I was, when I was looking at the Architecturals, that's pretty much what I was looking at, too. It's just more of the detail that, because it seems like a pretty good wash as far as what's being proposed for the lighting. I, I could be wrong on it, but.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
And of course, the turnpike is gonna offer its own lighting, too, so unfortunately. So you'll have darkening shades on all those, super darkening shades.
Just a reminder, too, I added in the fact that he did go to wetlands, and remember that we had, that's in paragraph six, Act six. Land texted, take a lot to determine to the property, they determined that there, there was no concern as far as regulated resources. That, too, that report had been shared with you, and I, you know, it's now going back almost three years ago.
Yeah.
Mention of that as well, and then the, you know, the remainder of it is, it's become a form of law form, so.
Alright, so any other concerns regarding the stipulation or ideas you'd like to share with the developer and the rest of the Commission now regarding the application or the plan before us? John, do you have something that you want?
To the extent this, it doesn't matter, cause we're talking about the Berlin Turnpike, but sometimes I, I think to myself about preventing excess light pollution where we can. Are these omnidirectional lamps, or are they, or the shades sort of directing the light down? Yeah, I mean, we're talking about the Berlin Turnpike, but I just always am, you know, wasting light seems to be.
They, they have a shield on that just.
Yep, that's my question. Thank, thank you very much.
Scott Hamel or Steve Biella, do you have any questions regarding the lighting on the? On the development? No? Okay. Anything for you, Scotty? He's probably having a hard time unmuting. I'll take that as a no. Okay, anything else? Where else?
Just in terms of when we do go to vote, I wanna just remind you of just kind of a housekeeping matter on the motion to authorize council staff to make any amendments or changes based on the comments and input that you've given. Because we will, you know, we'll go back through everything and, and consider what has been discussed, whether or not we wanna, you know, tweak any language, so we wanna make sure that we're getting that authority to do that. And, you know, any other changes that are appropriate to complete the stipulation. So if you could, just include that in the motion, that would be appreciated.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Alright, anything else? Commission is the last chance. Alright. So, if you want.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the stipulation for judgment as presented with the condition that council and staff have the authority to authorize necessary amendments or changes, which would include that staff and the applicant will work to come to consensus on landscaping, lighting, and lighting?
Or any architectural.
Architectural changes.
And if I could just ask you to add that you authorize council to execute the stipulation on behalf of the Commission once it is final?
I would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay. We have the motion. Do we have a second?
Developer has great to to be included in in, in the, in the approval, the four inches, whatever, four inches around.
The trim, yeah.
Everything that was discussed tonight and agreed by the applicant to be included.
Okay, so do you wanna amend your motion to include that, or?
I'm sure.
Because you had the motion, so.
I'm happy to amend.
Alright, so do we have a, a second, an overall second? Alright, second by Mr. Zigma. Then do we have further discussion from the Commission? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Opposed? Hearing none. Alrighty, that's that. So I think we cleaned up item one and two, and it looks like we've even cleaned up the next, well, this next one is for nineteen oh six. It, is this, wait, what, what?
That is.
Yep, 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 we don't have to do that. Okay, so now, now, I can ask for a motion to adjourn at eight twenty in the evening? Mr. Zigma has the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jorsy. Further discussion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed? Anyone's opposed? Okay, so, so move. Thank you, Scott Hamel, thank you, Steve Biella, for participating. Eight twenty, that's it. Alright, no problem. I know you'll.
Have a good night.
I know you'll do a good job. You really will. We don't, we're not trying to give you a hard time, but.
Okay. I know, you don't want that rep. But it's good, too, cause that keeps other people out, so I love that.